Good evening. I'd like to call to order our regular scheduled council meeting for Monday, December 2nd, 2013 at 8:00 PM. Our first order of business is the National Anthem, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by a moment of silence for those service members that have given their lives while defending our country. Would everybody please stand?
(Music) Oh, Saint Anthony, see by the dawn's early light, I see nothing we fear, but the twilight's last leaving, who's the strength and right to fight? For the perilous night, when the fangs have been washed, where's the gallant least speaking? And the fog has risen, the thunder has seen it there; give to the one light as a fan walks through the air. Oh, freedom, that's our strength, and the glory in praise! And the hope of the great!
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please be seated. Ms. Bettis, can you take the roll, please?
Good evening, Your Honor. Mayor Walker?
Here.
Councilmember Lynch?
Here.
Councilmember King?
Here.
Councilmember Squires?
Here.
Councilmember Kerwin?
Here.
Councilmember McCarrage?
Here.
Councilmember Sesersky?
Here.
Okay, next item on our agenda is item four, approval of the agenda as presented.
So moved.
Moved by Councilmember Lynch, supported by Councilmember Squires, any discussion from the table, from the general public? Ms. Bettis?
Councilmember Lynch?
Aye.
Councilmember Squires?
Aye.
Councilmember Sesersky?
Aye.
Councilmember McCarrage?
Aye.
Councilmember Kerwin?
I'm going to abstain.
Uh, Councilmember King?
Aye.
Mayor Walker?
Aye. Next item is item five, community events. We have Chief Harmon.
Thank you, Mayor Walker. Good evening, Council. I wanted to announce our third annual Guns and Hoses Charity Hockey Game. The proceeds will go to the Berger Center for School for Autism here in Garden City. It's our hockey game that Mayor, uh, Chief Murray, our city manager, is proudly presenting the trophy that's been in the possession of the Police Department for the last year.
Oh, this thing?
Yeah.[224.84][224.84](Laughter). Um, it's, the event's December 14th, 4:00 PM at the Garden City Ice Arena. So please come out. We will be promoting the show on the Garden City Community Chat this Thursday evening as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Move on to item-
Mr. Mayor, excuse me.
Oh.[244.12][244.12](Laughter).
There, actually, is one other community announcement that I've been kind of keeping under my hat, and I'd like to ask Ms. Fulton to come up and-
Okay.
-fill us in on some details.
Very good.
I was going to do it in my city manager's report, but I knew I'd forget half the-
Thank you. I am very, very happy to inform you and announce that the National League of Cities, through its Institute for Youth Education and Families, has chosen Garden City to receive a $28,000 planning grant.
(Applause).
And this is for the city's expanding health access for children and families initiative that they're doing across the nation. The funding will be used to convene a task force, a community-wide task force, to look at the needs and the number of children and families that are uninsured, and to develop a business plan to propose to the National League of Cities for a $260,000 implementation grant. And the goal here is to have as many of our children and families enrolled in Medicaid or Medicaid as possible, especially with all the healthcare changes. And I just wanted to let you know that there were 12 communities selected of the 22 that applied, and we are among company Dallas, Texas, Houston, Texas, Omaha, Nebraska, Savannah, Georgia, Providence, Rhode Island, New Bedford, Massachusetts, Columbia, Pennsylvania, Jacksonville, Florida, Pittsburgh, Pennsylvania, Aurora, Colorado, and Hattiesburg, Mississippi.
Wow. Nice.
Great.
And Mr. Murray and myself, Dr. Stan Shaka from the school district, Catherine Chandler from the hospital, that is the core team, and we will be convening a community-wide task force to meet over the next six months and develop our business plan. All costs are covered.
Congratulations.[369.21][369.21](Applause).
We keep getting grants for our city. That's fantastic.
Of the hundreds of applicants-
Yep. That's fantastic.
-Garden City was selected, and that speaks well, among other things, to Ms. Fulton and her expertise.
Yep, absolutely. Okay, we'll move on to item six, comments from state and county officials. We've got State Representative David Kenezak.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I just wanted to first begin today by thanking all of you for your support at our recent Veterans Expo that was hosted by Commissioner LeBlanc and myself. We had over 150 veterans and their families come out that day. Almost 100 vets get signed up for the individual ID card program. And as recently as this evening, the Commissioner and I have been approached again about, they know somebody who needs to get tied into it, where can we go? So we're very happy to be able to provide that service and get people connected with those benefits that they earned. Just want to thank everybody here, as well as some of our community folks who really helped us put on that event as well. Just a really brief update, on November the 12th, the Governor signed Senate Bill 352. And Senate Bill 352 is a property tax exemption for 100% disabled veterans. So what I've found in going from city to city is that this is a great bill, a great benefit for our veterans, but a lot of folks just don't know about it. And so I'm trying to go around and just make sure that folks know. If you're 100% disabled veteran, if you have been determined to be individually unemployable by the Department of Veterans Affairs, I would encourage you to reach out to the Task Department here in the city of Garden City. The phone number is 734-793-1610. Again, that's 734-793-1610. So if you're 100% disabled veteran, if you know somebody who's 100% disabled veteran, or even if they're not 100%, but they've been determined to be individually unemployable, just encourage you to reach out to that phone number. And because we're coming up here on the end of the year, there is a time sensitivity to this issue. Next week, the Board of Review is going to be meeting here in Garden City, so I'd encourage you guys to hop on it tomorrow, or at least by the end of the week if you can. Any questions on that briefly before we move on? Excellent. And then finally, just another quick plug for the Guns and Hoses event coming up on December 14th. I'm going to be lacing up my skates to play. I'm being courted by the police officers and the firefighters to be on their team, so I might, I might just pull a complete political move and play half.
(Laughter).
That wasn't my idea. I can't take credit for it, but it's a pretty good one. So just encourage everybody to come out there. It's a great cause, a great event, and, you know, I'm never adverse to lacing up the skates and having a good time. So appreciate your time, and again, if you need anything, you know where to find me. Residents know where to find me, and appreciate the opportunity to serve.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. And then we have from the county, County Commissioner Richard LeBlanc.
Richard King, what? Thank you, Mayor. Council-appointed officials and citizens, I want to start by saying I'm not being courted by anybody. Last time that happened, I ended up in a church, and I'm still paying for it.[588.16][588.16](Laughter). So I am here, though, to talk about one item, and that's make us seniors smile. Last month, I hosted for the first time as a Commissioner that event, an event that had been carried on in this community for several years. And I know that when Sue Buck called me about, you know, potentially doing an article, she asked what the biggest concern was initially, and I said, "Well, you know, if you throw a party, you hope that someone's going to show up." So I'm so very pleased to say that with all of the volunteerism that is a part of the fabric of Garden City, we had about 135 volunteers, and it was incredible. Amongst the people, of course, were members of council and other, a city clerk and others that showed up. In fact, we got a, we got a call, and the, and the city clerk calls and says, "Hey, I don't know if I'm at the right address or not, but I'm the only one here."[643.54][643.54](Laughter). Well, the fact is that some of the other folks that were assigned there didn't quite make it, so I took a team over there. We joined her, and we got some stuff done on, I think it was four or five different houses.
Yeah, we went to about five.
Yeah, and it was really a great time. You know, this is one of those things where, you know, Councilwoman, Mayor pro temp, J.A. Lee Lynch knows because she's been actively assisting in this and assisted in my office this year as well. But it's an opportunity one day a year to say thanks to our seniors, and it really was a nice day. Turned out great, but it couldn't happen without the people volunteering. So I wish to say to the Garden City community, thank you. We'll be doing it again next year, November 8th, and so we'll be soliciting both homes to do and volunteers to help do them, probably beginning after Labor Day. And that's really about it. But with that, I say thank you, and appreciate the opportunity to talk.
Thank you, sir. Okay, moving on to item seven, we have no petitions or communications tonight. We have no public hearings. We'll move on to item nine, our consent agenda.
Mayor?
Councilmember Lynch?
I move for the approval of the consent agenda, items nine, A, 1 through 5.
Support.
Support from Councilmember Sesersky. Any discussion from the table, from the general public? Ms. Bettis?
Councilmember Lynch?
Aye.
Councilmember Sesersky?
Aye.
Councilmember McCarrage?
Aye.
Councilmember Kerwin?
Aye.
Councilmember Squires?
Aye.
Councilmember King?
Aye.
Mayor Walker?
Aye. Motion passes 7-0. We'll move on to our study session, part of our agenda, item B1, proposed zoning tax amendment. Council's wish on this?
Uh, I'm personally opposed to it, so I'd rather see nothing done, but if we need to vote on it-
I agree.
I'm on the same thing.
Yeah, I have questions.
Okay. You want to ask?
Some questions on it?
Yeah.
Um-
Who do we have here?
Sir Trexler.
Sarah, you want to come up, please? Councilmember McCarrage, go ahead.
I, I'm, after reading the information, I'm, I know that this, I assume this was put in front of us because of problems with rats or rodents? Is that an issue that we're fighting right now? I mean, I guess I'm not-
We've heard from Planning Commission members, you know, taking this through their process, that at least there's a perception that there are rats in the community, or the proliferation of it, or the desire to prevent them from, you know, spreading more. I, I personally haven't received any complaints or knowledge. I just know that other metro Detroit communities, you know, have problems. The reason this was initiated was because the building department, for my understanding is years, was, was applying the, the building code requirement for structures, or, I'm sorry, buildings that were less than 400 square feet. We wanted to put it in front of council to hear, you know, stop doing that, or, you know, let's clean up the books and get it in the zoning ordinance. So, you know, we, we took it through Planning Commission to get their thoughts on the matter, and they're recommending, you know, the ordinance change. But of course, it's entirely up to you whether you do want to require rat walls for buildings lower, you know, or less than 400 square feet. The building code itself requires them for buildings over 400 square feet. So the placement of it in the zoning ordinance would be if you thought it was necessary or desirable to do it for buildings less than that. We just wanted to get your pleasure. You know, we apologize, or really apologize for the memo that I wrote that I thought clarified it and had a wrong reference to structures rather than buildings. And I know that there was kind of a split feeling on the last council as well, so.
Mayor, are you done?
The buildings that you're talking about, this could be-
Sheds.
A shed, two-by-two shed, or two-by-four, I mean, some of them are pretty small-
Right.
-so it would affect any, any building-
Any build, any accessory building.
So, and that would involve, if this is passed, it would involve a permit?
Yes.
And I understand, talking to Councilwoman Sesersky, that building permits are under a thousand or under all the same.
Um, I don't have the fee schedule in front of me right now.
The fees could have changed, but that's how it has been, up to $1,000 was one cost.
Yeah, and I don't have a copy of the fee schedule, but I can, I can get back with you on that.
But they'd have to pay a fee, I mean, they'd have to get a permit and pay a fee-
Right.
-and then have the rat wall put in and then inspected-
Inspected, yeah.
-and then the, the building, you know, then they would be able to do that for even a small shed, yes.
Yeah, as it's written right now, it would be any accessory building less than 400 square feet. Um, you know, if you, if you all thought that, you know, hey, maybe it's not appropriate for, you know, that small of a structure, maybe we should do 200 or 400, or, you know, it's something that we could, we could bring back more information if you wanted us to run a couple of scenarios, or look at applications in the last year or so involving these accessory buildings, and, you know, kind of run how many of these rat walls would have been installed, and, and bring back that kind of information. And anything you would like to see, I think we can produce.
Mayor? Mr. Kerwin?
Uh, Mr. Trexler, just so everybody understands, when we're talking about this building, this is a non-inhabitable building. This is not for any type of a dwelling. This is just for accessory buildings, sheds, whatever.
Right.
And to be honest with you, I don't see the need. I've been around here a long time-
Right.
-and I do this type of work, and I don't know of any rats crawling. I mean, I think the rat problem is people with their-
Carvage.
-wood and junk. It's not crawling under accessory buildings, you know.
Buildings.
So I, I don't see the need to have to go through that. We're not going to lose a dime. If I come in here and apply for a permit-
Right.
-and it's a shed floor, I'm going to pay 138 bucks if it has or doesn't have a rat wall.
Yeah.
So it makes no difference to the city, but, and I don't see the, I don't really see the need for it.
Yeah, the fiscal impact on the city, you know, without having those-
Is none.
-I'm sure is very, very, very small or none. It really, it really would impact applicants, you know, more than, you know, the city's finances. That said, if you, if you think that there's a greater public benefit in requiring them, then, you know, that's up to you. But if you don't think that the benefits outweigh the, the cost to the residents and the applicants, then it seems like a pretty easy decision. Really, it was just a housekeeping thing for us because we hadn't, you know, had you all weigh in on it.
Okay.
Mayor?
Ms. Squires?
Um, that would even include like a children's playhouse-
Yeah.
-things like that, and I just can't see-
If it was a permanent structure. So if it's like a temporary, you know, like one of the plastic placeable ones, obviously, that you can pick up and move around, but-
Right. But I can't see the residents having to pay that much money-
Me neither.
-for a small shed.
Okay.
I just-
It's an unnecessary fee.
It is, it is.
Okay.
Okay.
I can take it, we'll leave it in B then, and we will not move it on to C, there's not enough current-
We will not bring her back.
Okay.[1181.63][1181.63](Laughter). Okay, we will move on to item two, proposed ordinance amendment for the building code. Council's wish on this?
I could go to C.
C.
Move it to C. Item three, special land use for R3 Multiple Family District at 6015 Merriman Road.
C.
Do we have any discussion on this?
We'll see for option two, which would be the public hearing.
All right, public, okay. All right, we'll move it to C, the public hearing. Item four, 2014 city council meeting schedule.
C.
C. C.
May I ask a question?
Go ahead.
I assume that we will be getting additional dates to add to this once we get into budget season?
We did allow for some, um, we increased the number of meetings in April, May, and June to allow for some, but as before, when we need to add more, we can't.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, item five, amendment to existing water purchase contract with Detroit Water and Sewer.
C.
C.
Okay. Item six, Garden City Streets Asset Management Plan.
C.
And number seven, leak detection program, change order.
C.
Okay, we will move on to our C agenda. First item is item C2, proposed ordinance amendment for the building code.
Yeah.
Councilmember Lynch?
I move to introduce proposed ordinance amendment to 151.01, adoption of building code by reference to require that city enforce the most current edition of the International Property Maintenance Code and call for a public hearing on December 16th, 2013 at 6:52 PM.
Support. Support from Councilmember Kerwin. Discussion from the table, from the general public. Ms. Bettis?
Councilmember Lynch?
Aye.
Councilmember Kerwin?
Aye.
Councilmember Sesersky?
Aye.
Councilmember McCarrage?
Aye.
Yep.
Aye.
Councilmember Squires?
Aye.
Councilmember King?
Aye.
Mayor Walker?
Aye. Item C3, special land use.
Your Honor?
Councilmember Sesersky?
Um, I would like to, um, take the application for the special land use at 6015 Merriman under consideration and call for a public hearing on Monday, December 16th, 2013 at 6:50 PM.
Support.
Support from Councilmember Lynch. Discussion from the table, from the general public. Ms. Bettis? Oh.
I'm from the temple.
Okay.
I've never done this before, so I don't know exactly what that means.
We're going to have the, the public have an opportunity to come up here, and we're going to have discussion on December 16th-
Okay.
-public hearing, and then we may or may not move forward with it. Depends after the public hearing. That's the next step in the process.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So you want to be here on December 16th at 6:50?
6:50.
Yep, thank you.[1404.32][1404.32](Applause). Anybody else? Ms. Bettis?
Councilmember Sesersky?
Aye.
Councilmember Lynch?
Aye.
Councilmember McCarrage?
Aye.
Councilmember Kerwin?
Aye.
Councilmember Squires?
Aye.
Councilmember King?
Aye.
Mayor Walker?
Aye. Item C4, 2014 city council schedule.
Mayor?
Ms. Squires?
I move to approve the attached 2014 city council meeting schedule.
Support.
Support from Councilmember McCarrage. Discussion from the table, from the general public. Mr. Buckner?
Do these dates include also like the budget discussion?
We'll add, we'll probably add some additional ones, but we did put three, three meetings for three months in a row.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, we added additional-
So they'll be included with, with these here as well?
Yes.
They're going to be all televised as well, or?
Not every budget meeting will be. All these council meetings will be.
But not the budget?
Not, not all of them, usually.
Don't you think councils should consider that, to, but, to televise the budget meeting? Because during the election, didn't you guys talk about accountability and true transparency? I think this would be a good way to show the public that you mean what you said.
Well, it is an open meeting to the public. They're welcome to come.
Well, why don't we televise? I think it'd be a lot for those that may not be able to come out.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? Ms. Bettis?
Councilmember Squires?
Aye.
Councilmember McCarrage?
Aye.
Councilmember Sesersky?
Aye.
Councilmember Kerwin?
Aye.
Councilmember King?
Aye.
Councilmember Lynch?
Aye.
Mayor Walker?
Aye. Item C5, amendment to the existing water purchase contract.
Mayor?
Ms. Buckner?
I move to approve language changes to the existing water purchase contract with Detroit Water and Sewer Department as contained an attachment A of correspondence from Hennessy Engineers dated November 22nd, 2013.
Support.
Support from Councilmember Sesersky. Discussion from the table, from the general public. Mr. Buckner?
I think this is talking about the rates, new rates or old rates, or if I, am I understanding it right? It's actually a language change for the, our annual volume of water used by the city was decreased to 86,000, million cubic feet, the maximum day usage set at 3.35 MGD and the peak hour usage set at 5.35 MGD at that time. Did you say decrease or increase?
Decrease at our flow rate.
Oh, flow, so that means that we should be looking for a decrease in our rates, right?
No. The two don't coincide.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Mary?
Actually, and Mr. Kern is here and available, these amendments that we're talking about right now have nothing to do with rates.
Oh, yeah.
That was part of a discussion that took place during the time these amendments were arrived at. This amendment just replaces the name City of Detroit with the DWSD Board of Water Commissioners since Detroit City Council no longer requires amendments, or is required to approve amendments. Also, it's a revised timeline and process of reviewing any communities that exceed the contract flow rates on an annual basis. But this does not speak directly to those limitations that you were just mentioning. Those were discussion items, but not part of this particular one.
Okay.
So that's open for future discussion. Okay, thank you.
Okay. Anybody else? Ms. Bettis?
Councilmember Lynch?
Aye.
Councilmember Sesersky?
Aye.
Councilmember McCarrage?
Aye.
Councilmember Kerwin?
Aye.
Councilmember Squires?
Aye.
Councilmember King?
Aye.
Mayor Walker?
Aye. Item C6, the Street Asset Management Plan.
Mayor?
Ms. Squires?
I move to approve Transportation Asset Management Plan for submittal to Michigan Department of Transportation.
Support.
Support from Councilmember King. Discussion from the table, from the general public. Ms. Bettis?
Councilmember Squires?
Aye.
Councilmember King?
Aye.
Councilmember Sesersky?
Aye.
Councilmember McCarrage?
Aye.
Councilmember Kerwin?
Aye.[1695.13]
Aye. Item C7, Leak Detection Program Change Order. C7.
Mayor?
Councilmember McCarrick?
To approve Change Order Number One, An Increase of $3,363.80 to Existing Contract With M.E. Simpson Company Incorporated, based on final actual quantity done at contract unit price.
Support. Support from Councilmember Kerwin. What this is, we have a company, uh, checking for leaks on our city water mains, and they thought we had ninety miles of city water mains. They found out we have a hundred and fourteen miles of city water mains, so we had to put this change order to cover that additional pipe, from ninety miles to a hundred and fourteen. Uh, any further discussion from the table, from the general public? Ms. Bettis?
Councilmember McCarrick?
Aye.
Councilmember Kerwin?
Aye.
Councilmember Sessersky?
Aye.
Councilmember Squires?
Aye.
Councilmember King?
Aye.
Councilmember Lynch?
Aye.
Mayor Walker?
Aye. Okay, we'll move on to Item 10, which is, uh, Public Comments. This is for items that are not on the agenda. This is your opportunity to come up and make a comment or a statement. It is not to engage, uh, in conversation with council members. Uh, Ms. Sessersky will be the timekeeper. Uh, there's a five-minute time limit, she will let you know when you have thirty seconds left, and then when your time is up. Anybody wishing to speak, please come up and state your name. Mr. Buckner?
Al Buckner. First, let me congratulate the, uh, new woman that's on council. You also made history in Garden City, first time we've had all women on council. Now, I feel sorry for Bob over here, because he working two jobs, he don't have, uh, a time to understand, uh, the nagging part, but I'm sure he's gonna be okay. Uh, also too, I'd like to thank, uh, Bob for, um, how he's helped me out this past year, answering my emails, sometimes, um, maybe, uh, a little informative, uh, discussion I had with him, and I really appreciate that, Bob, so thank you. Uh, I wish that I could've got the same results from the other part of the city, but we'll work on that. Change is good, and I'm glad to see that we got some change up here. It's time that we get some new blood up here, new thoughts, and will help the city move it forward, okay? We have had some people up here that's got some experience, and hopefully we can move from the four years of life we had, till we can move onward in the next two years. Reason why I say change is good, because we hear a lot about me being negative, okay? Uh, negativity is good, so it's positive. But if we're positive all the time, what happens is, we get that warm feeling, when we have a low voter turnout and we win election. That's what's called a fuzzy feeling. Now, for me, being negativity all the time, what we end up having to do is call Dr. Phil, and we don't want to do that, okay? Uh, just so that you know, and a lot of you do know, and a lot of you been there, I do have a, uh, Facebook page, it's called Watchmen for Garden City. Um, also have a, uh, website called watchmenforgardencity.com, and also gonna be putting together a newsletter, hopefully in the future here, to help the citizens of Garden City to be more informed. And I really like to say, the website, I appreciate the people that are hitting it, also making sure I don't have to pay for it, so I really appreciate that. Um, I'm gonna be taking some vacation time, I won't be back after the first of the year, but when I do come back, I got four main topics that I want to bring before the council, and hopefully they'll discuss it. One, which I've already bought about, the budget being televised, two, about the water. Walker and Bettis both, three different occasions off camera, said that there is no meter charge. We do have a meter charge. Street lighting, which is illegal, now it's over a hundred dollars, we can petition Lansing. We do have the forms for that. Now, this one's gonna be a shock to a lot of people, the retirement fund. The unfunded fund of the retirement for the future is in, gonna cost Garden City a hundred and twenty million dollars, and I'll be able to prove this and bring the facts before people. Once again, like I said, go to my Facebook page, go to my website, watchmenforgardencity.com, gonna be adding a lot of information on that, okay? Recently, I had a chance, after the election, to sit in on the voting of the absentee ballot. It was very new to me, uh, it was very interesting, I had the opportunity to sit there with five women, all day long, from twelve to eight. Need to give Allison the hand clap, because she was kind to answer what questions I had that day, also let me out to go release my bladder, and even got to eat some Mexican food, so I really appreciate her for that. But I do have some other questions, since I came out. I looked at the Michigan State Election Law, uh, ML Chapter 168, and there were some things I seen happen that I questioned, and hopefully I'll get these answered, and dig more into them in the future. Uh, that was far as testing or checking the ballots to the applications. Um, I seen a ballot being ripped, I seen, uh, the clerk talking to the chairperson a couple of times in secret, I didn't understand what that was about. I took the notes, like everybody else did, that we could not use cell phones, and yet I seen people in there with cell phones, and I seen them use them as well. Um, also, at towards the end of the day, about two hours, when it was supposed to be a closed session, um, and it happened right in here, I sit right over there, and I got into the witness box, um, I happened to, Dan York came in to get his cable equipment, the door was ajar from the cable, and that was for about two hours, there was no clerk, nobody in here. I questioned that matter too, because I was told that doors had to be locked, you had to be let out or in. Uh, so that's some of the questions that, uh, I'm looking into, and, and hopefully we'll get a thorough answer and satisfying. Okay, thank you very much, and I'll see you soon.
Thank you. Anybody else? Yes, sir.
You're making a mistake about the sheds and the rat laws, and I respect the opinion that, uh, they were gonna cause rats, they may not cause them, but believe me, when they move in the neighborhood, they sure find a home under them, 'cause I had a neighbor that had one sitting around years ago, rats come in down the street, but guess where they nested at? Right under that shed. So you're making a big mistake. The rat, the shed, uh, not having a rat on the shed may not actually cause a rat population, but believe me, brother, when they move in, that's the first place they're gonna go, and they're gonna nest under that shed, and they're gonna spread like wildfire, and they're awful hard to get rid of. And you're making a big mistake. And congratulations on everybody that wound up in here, I would have babysat the deer again, up north again this year, like I usually do, but congratulations to everybody, and hopefully, well, I ain't gonna say but, because the last council was up here, I thought it got off to a great start too, and then something happened. I hope this time it's not. Hopefully this time, we'll stay on a great start. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Muller. Anybody else? Mr. Buckner?
I got ten houses, I, I, two guys, sale, ten houses.
Ten houses?
Yeah, for sale.
For sale.
Empty. And, uh, what about the mice problem? Mice?
Mice?
I don't think we have a mice, a mouse problem.
I, you can have mice around here, so, and chase them out. Mice. What's that? It was housing, ten houses, it's like, empty, that's it in there. Big team we got.
Thank you, Mr. Buckner. Anybody else? Okay, City Manager's Report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't have a lot tonight, I, I wanted to bring to council's attention, something that I'm very proud of as the, uh, police chief, one of our officers, who begged me not to mention his name, so I pledged to Sergeant Arnowski that I would not mention his name. He discovered a, uh, quite an inventory of old outdated police coats. These were coats, uh, purchased by former officers, current officers, but they had, uh, grown old, our styles had changed, but we kept, uh, all of these in a closet somewhere, about forty of them. It just so happened the Goodfellows was using our building to do some of their work this year, and, um, Sergeant, I'm sorry, the, uh, the officer got into a conversation, and he found a, a good place for those coats to go. They were donated to the Goodfellows, Dave Spiteri oversaw this, uh, and these coats will be going to homeless veterans, and I just can't think of a better place, uh, for them to go. Uh, so the Goodfellows and the American Legion joined in with us in, in working on that project, and I, I'm especially proud of, uh, Sergeant Arnowski, who will remain unnamed, for getting on top of that. I want to mention to people that, uh, on our website, on the City of Garden City website, there is a, a customer survey. If you do business with the city, and it's any kind of business, from we pulled you over to write you a ticket, or, uh, the fire department was at your home for a medical rescue, or you were in for a building permit, we have a ser, survey, we'd like to know how we're doing. Uh, if we're not doing well, I want to know, if we're doing well, I want to know that too, and, and it helps us gauge. You can leave your name or not leave your name, you could just tell us about your experience, and, and we work on improving things, so I would encourage, uh, people to find that on our website at www.gardencitymi.org, and I can't remember if it's under, uh, Citizen Services, but it's a, click around, it's a fascinating website, and it gets better every day. Plant Moran, our auditor, has asked us if council would like to schedule a workshop, the topic, the sole topic of the workshop would be municipal accounting, Ms. Bettis?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Um, I, I think it would be, uh, beneficial, they assured us it wouldn't be a lengthy, uh, workshop, and I, I would like to get a consensus from council, is this something you're interested in doing?
Yes, absolutely.
All right, we'll go, we'll go ahead and work on that then?
Yes, sir.
And, finally, I, I'm a rookie city manager, so I might sometimes step over lines that I shouldn't step over, but, uh, Mr. Buckner's presentation tonight, uh, just, it troubled me. Uh, Mr. Buckner contacted Ms. Bettis with some concerns on, uh, I believe, November 19th, regarding the absentee voters' ballot counting. Ms. Bettis responded on, uh, November 21st, not to Mr. Buckner's satisfaction, and then, I believe, responded again November 26th, so that's seven days, and part of that delay was that Ms. Bettis and I needed to talk about how we wanted this presented. I've been to Mr. Buckner's, um, Facebook page, where he mentions that it took him two weeks to get his answers from Ms. Bettis, or he was still waiting, but that's not a fact, and if I understood him correctly tonight, he said he's still waiting for answers, and that's not a fact. Uh, I, I certainly don't, uh, want to step on, uh, any of Mr. Buckner's, uh, First Amendment rights, but we keep, we need to, all of us keep in mind, uh, that, the truth takes on many faces. I'm just really troubled that, uh, Ms. Bettis, who by the way, apparently is not referred to as Ms. Bettis, or as Allison, just referred to as Bettis, just as the mayor is just referred to as Walker, just as this council is referred to as all women, I find this extremely disrespectful. Um, I, I just, we spend a great deal of time catering to, uh, some of these non-productive events, and I want council to know that going forward, uh, I'll certainly continue to carry out our spirit of transparency and openness, but I am, I am not going to continue to dance to the tune of one fiddler. If council wants something from me, if council wants me to do something, if council wants an investigation or an explanation of what transpired, uh, during the absentee, uh, ballot counting, that's just fine, and I'm all for it, but I just cannot see us continuing to spin our wheels to satisfy one person who feels that, uh, the constant negativity is the best way to move this city forward. And I apologize for that rant, but I just, I, I, I'm just so troubled tonight, that he gets up there and said he still doesn't have any answers. It's not true, she CC'd me on every response. He got his answers. Thank you, that's all I have tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Kerwin?
Excuse me, yes, Your Honor, um, I don't have much, but, uh, that was what I was going to do, is I thought I heard Mr. Buckner say it was all women, which I don't think it is, uh, the council, um, let me see, uh, oh, the, uh, the jacket, the police jackets, coat that you gave away, you pulled the patches off, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay, good idea.
Sergeant Arnowski pulled each and every one off.
And then one other thing I had, actually, was for, uh, Mrs. Lynch, I think you're somehow involved in this with the, um, what do you call it, the, uh, the DTE?
Smart meters?
Yeah, the, uh...
Smart meters.
Smart meters. I've had conversation with two older women in town, and, uh, that are kind of worried to death about this, and then I talked to somebody else who said their mother is a quite elderly lady, was concerned with this. Do you know much about this, really? I asked Mr., uh, Chico about it, and he, uh, didn't tell me much, he didn't, he didn't think there's anything to worry about, but do you know anything that we should know?
The information that I know has come from the CWW meetings that I go to, and just a quick synopsis is basically, there should not be any reason for anyone to be worried about the meters, and if indeed you are, because each person's health is different, each person, you know, who am I to say that it's a hundred percent fit on everybody? But if you are, then you get ahold of DTE, and you can opt out of that particular meter.
I think around nine dollars a month, I believe?
Yes, because they have to send somebody out to read your meter, whereas the others are electronically forwarded, so they have to pay for the time of the person to come out each month and read your meter, that's why there's a charge.
Do you know anything, the, the people that came, I believe a couple times, there was, uh, one man and a couple women, I think, then there was somebody else another time, do you know what their thing is with this? I mean, I, they're totally against it, but do you know?
I know that there has been a group of people that are against it, that they've gone to other communities voicing their disapproval with the smart meters, that they've gone to Wayne County voicing their disapproval with the smart meters, and I believe we were just the next community that they were coming to, because they knew that DTE was coming into town to start changing out the meters.
But then, I also understand, the city can opt out, or make sure they don't do this, is this correct?
I do not believe that's the case.
Okay, like I say, after talking to a couple people, actually three people about this, I don't know much about it, but if anybody else?
It's my understanding, and I could be wrong on this, but anyone that uses a cellphone has more of whatever it is that's being admitted from the meter. Yeah, the, the telephones are worse than the meters are, so.
Did you have a comment, Mrs. King?
Yes, just to say, after going through this fantastic book, okay, it's, it's wonderful book, um, I know more about RFs than I ever want to know, okay, which is radio frequency.
Right.
And with that in mind, your minuscule amount on this meter is less than what you have in your microwaves at home, in your routers for your computers, in anything that has already been effective, and been looked into many times over, and verified by good sources, um, WHO, and I, I mean, I can go through all kinds of things here, but it's quite interesting, there's been a lot of care taken in making sure that we are protected, and that the transference back and forth is not going to get into your bedrooms, it will not show it what you're doing, I mean, these are things that are kind of blown out of proportion. So people need to know that it is quite safe, quite safe.
Well, listen, uh, I didn't want to know all that, but I, I appreciate it.
You betcha, anytime.
Thank you.
Mr. Kerwin, do you have anything else?
Uh, no, sir, Your Honor, that's, uh, that's, uh, pretty much it, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Ms. McCarrick?
Um, I, I think that discussion we just had is important for the people to hear, because, of course, people do say they're worried, but they have to remember, and I think this is a good sample, and also, Mr. Buckner, that some of the information that is given out, at, you know, during the public comments, is not necessarily factual, and, you know, we have to, um, the council, we will try to get the information as factual to the public as possible, um, and we, I know everyone at this table, um, is willing to answer questions, so, uh, again, uh, we got information, and I think everyone can be, you know, feel safe with what's going on, so. Um, but I do, uh, one, I'd like to, to thank the city manager for his comments, and we will, I know personally, I will support that, very, very much. Uh, and then, the only other thing is, um, Monica, um, I had the pleasure of being her, um, boss for several years, and I'm aware of all of the grants that she wrote, what I'm also aware of is the evenings and weekends that she gave up to have to write these, um, these grants, but I think even more importantly, she's able to continue to be successful getting grants because of her grant administration. Uh, once she gets the grants, she does it, and her staff does it right, and I've been to many meetings, uh, with other agencies that have gotten grants, that I could, I even knew, didn't get it, and, and, um, Mrs. Fulton, um, gets it, and her staff gets it, so, um, just, it doesn't come easy.
Thank you.
And not only did she write grants, but she's on the parade committee, which, I also know Monica, and Margot, and Pat, um, are also on the committee, and if you, thank you very much, the committee, you've just done a great job.
Thank you.
That's it.
Mrs. King?
Um, just a couple things, actually, I'd like to put photos out to Mr. LeBlanc and Mr. Kneecik, that was wonderful, absolutely wonderful, and, um, I have passed it on to other people, that they will be doing it again, will be notified of that, and I think it's great to get it out there to people. Also, there is a list, I found out from...
Also, there is a list, I found out from, regarding a list for veterans of all the things that they can possibly, you know, utilize as into their benefit, you know, the discounts and such, and he is looking into getting me the list so that we can go ahead and make it, put it on our site, or pass it out, or whatever, because a lot of vets don't know what they have coming. They really don't, and it's important to make them aware of that. Also, let's see, the straight farmhouse, just a little mention of the fact that they're going to, don't forget, they have that big Santa coming on, the whole thing.
Display.
Yeah, there's, I don't know how many, but quite a few. They've been collected for years, and that's going to open up to the public on the 7th of December. And at that time, they're only open on Wednesdays and Saturdays, or pardon me, no, noon to 3 on Wednesdays and Saturdays. But if you want to have a, just to go in at another time and be able to see it, or take a group in, you can call them, and there is a number, 734-1226, for a private tour, and they will do that for you. So, just another thing to know, and that's about all I have to say.
Thank you. Ms. Bettes, do you have anything tonight?
No, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Sisirski?
Just a small announcement. This Saturday, December 7, is St. Rayfield's annual cookie walk. It is at 10:00 a.m., and they bake fabulous cookies, so you are all welcome to come out and attend and purchase some cookies for the holidays. And that's all I have tonight, Your Honor. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Squires?
Okay, first of all, thank you, Chief Murray, for your comments. It is unfortunate that we do get a lot of inaccurate and incomplete information from some people, but we are determined to still move forward, no matter what. We're behind you, as far as that goes. And Monica Fulton, a job well done, as usual. And as Pat McCarrick said, she works on the parade committee also, and does so many different things, and we do appreciate you greatly. So, thank you. And I think that's probably about it. Thank you.
Ms. Lynch?
Yes. I want to congratulate everybody that was involved in the Christmas parade. Every year, it just seems to get better and better. I don't know what it is, and the weather couldn't have cooperated any better. It was a beautiful parade on Saturday. It was nice to see Santa not only here on Saturday, but tonight is well down on the Commons Corner. Tree lighting was beautiful. Christmas carols just kind of set the mood for the holidays. And I wanted, thinking of the tree lighting, I just wanted to make mention, I know I received a message from a lady that lives in Redford, got an email today, and she said that she comes to Garden City every day to watch her two grandsons, and, or grandchildren, and when she was coming through town this morning through the downtown area, all the trees were lit, and she just raved about the trees being lit, and thought it was just absolutely beautiful, as we do too. So, everything that's going on right now, putting us in the holiday spirit, making people smile, that's what the season's all about, and can't wait to continue it. Kudos to everyone involved, and that's all I have.
Thank you. I have several items tonight. First off, Chief, thanks for your comments. I'm behind you 110%. I couldn't agree with you more. Monica, another fantastic job. It's the type of employees we have in this city, folks. We're well over $3 million in grants the last few years that have been awarded to our city from the efforts of our employees writing these grants, so that's just fantastic. The Veterans Expo, Mr. LeBlanc and Mr. Kinesik set up with help from Cheryl Parton. Fantastic event, and it was packed. It was packed. And one of our business owners, Tony, down here at Garden City Cafe, the owner of Garden City Cafe, donated over 200 subs to feed everybody. I mean, just, that's the type of people we have in the city, the type of business owners, and people need to know that. So, if you need to go get something to eat, go to Garden City Cafe and give us some business. The parade, awesome again. Margot, the team that does it, Dan York, you guys, just fantastic. The tree lighting, the DDA, our lights look great again. The tree this year is beautiful, and we're already getting comments from people driving through town. It just, it just makes our city look great. And then, to Ms. Roney, I noticed we finished with Bach and Lathers, two street projects. There's some punch list items, but basically, those two streets are done, which is great. Only request I would have is, I'd like to start earlier on what we're gonna do next year, so we're, we kind of finish kind of late, cold temperatures. I would like to figure out what streets we're gonna do in 2014, because we gotta meet with the residents, and I'd like to push that up if all possible, if you could start working on that and come to council with what we plan on doing in 2014, because we have to keep improving our infrastructure. We still have several miles of bad streets. We only have so much money to spend, but still, we gotta plug away with what we can afford, and it's just a great job on those two projects, but just come to us as soon as you can with 2014. And then, last, I want to thank the many residents, employees, business owners that sent cards, phone calls, prayers to our family and the loss of my stepson. Just overwhelming type of people we have in this community, and from the bottom of my heart, my wife's heart, we thank you, and very much appreciate it. With that, no further business. This meeting is adjourned.